Meetings order. The task number this number one. That's important information. Thank you all for coming. Good to see you. Start then with the approval of the agenda. Anything to add to the agenda? Okay, so do I have a motion to approve the agenda? America, second. Second. All those in favor of approving the agenda, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Next up is the consent agenda. We have a couple of changes to make on the mark minutes. So those were made. Yeah. And we have the minutes from the board meetings from last two months. We'll check if I'm based on board about the minutes from the finance committee. Everything looks good to you, Jim?
Yes.
All right. Any, any other comments or changes or anything to the consent agenda? All right, so do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda? Motion from Bob?
Second.
Second, America, okay. A further discussion. All those in favor of approving the consent agenda, please say aye.
Aye.
All right, sounds good. Next up, we have time for public comments and announcements. If there's anyone who would like to make a public comment or announcement, please remember to keep your comments to about three minutes and start by saying your name and an address. And then remember that we don't respond to comments at the moment. Oh, yeah. I'll do that. Is there anyone here who would like to make a public comment or announcement? Okay. Before we move on to the presentations, let's just do a quick roll call. Thank you for reminding me about that. Justin, please go ahead.
Okay, Matt Holden.
Here.
Bob Davis.
Here.
John Ward.
Here.
Erica Libinow.
Here.
Terry Clark.
Here.
Julie Peterson.
Here.
Scott Olander.
Here.
Dr. Kevin Martin. Here. Dr. Roberta Hoppy. I think we'll see. Yes, Michelle Whirl.
Here.
Mandy Olson.
Here.
Dee Dee Utley.
Here.
Rhonda Holden.
Here.
Stacy Olaya.
Here.
Jeff Yamada.
Here.
Ron Herlacher.
Here.
All right. Dr. Hoppy, are you here?
Yes.
No, it's okay, no problem. We just, it is hoppy then, yeah. All right. So next up, we have presentations. We just have one presentation on the agenda. This is an announcement of the safe, the non-clinical Safe Catch Award for quarter of 2023. I've talked about this before, but this is a really important award that we decide on at the QI Council. And it's, I've said it before, one of the best parts of my job to see the great work that employees do at KBH. I'm just going to read really quickly what the Safe Catch Award is. Although I'm sure that Mandy could have started by it. Safe Catch involves at least one of the following. Catch prevented an event from reaching a patient or staff member. Catch prevented pain, delays in care, unnecessary costs, or workflow inefficiencies. Situation was high risk or had potential for greater patient harm, such as communication errors, surgical site infections, or falls. Catch led to frontline or just in time improvement. So we have our two non-clinical award winners here today. Sierra Roberts and Monique McCready. And they're both CMAs. And I'm just going to read the, what the nominator, Jonika Petson, wrote to nominate the two of them. Sierra is a travel CMA who brought forward a supply expiration system. It utilizes a color-coded key that is hung in the clean med cupboard. Monique helped make this idea come to fruition. And now all supply items in the main clean bed storage, as well as all exam rooms, are stickered appropriately with the expiring month written on it. This makes finding and identifying expired items very easy for myself and all staff, ensuring that nothing we use for patient care is outside of safe dates. I've talked about this with Stacy and the other managers, and we are planning on rolling this system out to all clinics. I talked, I talked to him the other day, and I was told that this was something that was done at your previous employer. Is that right? And you decided to bring it here because you thought it sounded like a good idea.
Yeah, well, I did that at my own job.
Yeah.
I told her about it, and she liked it. She had this little sticky notes of the some, like the items. And I was like, oh, well, I did this at my other job. And she just, he really liked that and helped.
Yeah. So, so anyway, the, the board, I don't really appreciate it. The QI Council appreciates it. And we're glad to have you here. Thank you for the work you do. And thank you for this, this work especially.
Thanks, Jim.
Congratulations. All right, so now I'll just head out for a moment and there you want to come, come with us here? Yeah, another member of the QI Council.
Boom, boom, boom.
Yeah.
All right, so moving on to reports and dashboards. First up, we have Mandy Olson with us.
All of here.
Yeah. So do we want to talk about survey of patient safety culture or D and B first?
I do, D and B.
D and B first, okay.
I think we're going to be pressing some board members into service around the survey of patients.
So we want them all here? Yes, a good idea. So on Tuesday, we had D and B arrive for our unannounced Critical Access Hospital Survey. And that's for conditions of participation for the Critical Access Hospital Program with CMS. And so they were here a day and a half, which is a shortened visit, but they're only required to come every three years per CMS. The D and B program is to come annually. So it is a bit of a more abbreviated survey process. One of the things they're looking at while they're here is our previous non-conformances and looking to see if we close those out, as they call them. So really created and sustained a reliable process for whatever they found before. Last time we had, I think there was 10, 10 non-conformances last time, and they were able to close seven during this visit, which was really great. The three that remained open, it wasn't that they found more non-conformant, non-conformances, but they, we were making progress, but we just weren't quite there yet. So they ended their closing meeting yesterday by saying what a pleasure it was to visit our organization, to meet the people, to see the positive things that KBH is doing for the community. They recognized the partnership we have with D and B, and that's really how they think about it, is a partnership and an opportunity to help us. They were really impressed with how friendly all the staff was, how transparent everyone was.
I was thrilled with the number of times they described staff and the relationships as being very transparent like that.
Yeah. Yeah. Transparent, but they're transparent. They, and they mentioned our culture a lot. They, they said that, I can tell from your culture. So that was really fascinating to me because you don't, I just haven't heard people mention it that, that way before. They were also looking to, if there were any new non-conformities, and they did have some, it was less than last time, so eight. So that'll be a total of 11, depending on if they, in our final report, sometimes they combine some, sometimes they downgrade some, sometimes they don't show up on there. They thought they were a non-conformance, but after they have review, there wasn't enough evidence. So we'll, we'll firm this up in our final report. But just to briefly mention the things that we'll be looking at is hand hygiene, narcotic sheet counts, medications that have ranges or where there's multiple medications, making sure that there's clear guidelines for staff to follow about how they would choose the medication so they're not working outside of their scope of practice. Some, like, things in the walls in certain areas or like soft surfaces where they had concerns about cleaning those or like dirty vents. So kind of, it's an infection control finding, but it's really about ability to, to clean surfaces. Holding table, yep, the holding table had some chip to remind them. So things that are not difficult to, to change. The physical environment surveyor did say that he thought it was amazing to close out so many findings on this survey. So those were, those were his findings, or that, these are his findings after this. There was a hood inspection that we missed. There's some chiller room alarms that have to have audible and visible alarming and signage and some signage around the formulin, where we're working with formulin and monitoring for formulin gas. There's a finding about the 96-hour resource list, which we are, is already in the process of being developed. Cylinder training, so like oxygen cylinder training.
Can I pause a second? The 96-hour resource list relates to our emergency preparedness plan. So it's the master list of things where we attempt to have 96 hours inventory on hand.
Yeah. So gas cylinder training, it's not that it's not being done with, is it being done with all the staff who need to have it? And, and I will say too, it was such a short visit. I think in some cases, we may have been able to produce some things where they would be able to say, okay, it's not a non-conformance. But, you know, we had a short period of time with them. And then making sure, last year, this was one of the ones that wasn't able to close, working to make sure that all of our medical staff receive annual training, whether they're employed or not. So Shannon had implemented a program to make sure that they got the training, but not all of them have actually completed. So that's what we'll be working on. It's generally associate staff that there was an issue with that.
What kind of training?
Well, it's like required training, so fire, life, safety. Yes, yeah, the OSHA required.
Is it specific to job category person then, or a general for all?
No, the, the, it's not just D and B or CMS too. It's kind of the ISO quality management part. Is everyone that's in your billing, building safe to work here and prepared if there's an emergency? And do they know what procedures to do? So it's even applies to contracted staff like travelers. And previously, we have, we do have a process in place for travelers or students or volunteers, and this group was just kind of overlooked. So we got the process in place and now it's getting them compliant to do it. And that was really, I don't know what anyone else wants to add. Dee Dee was with the clinical surveyor the majority of the time, and Ron was with the physical environment folks. And they had multiple people helping them, and I was with the generalist. And we know a lot of staff that were just great to work with.
Listening on the exit interviews, yeah, like you noted, it was nice to hear their thoughts and observer and stuff. So again, I think I want you to feel really good. I think as board members, we should feel good at the, you know, what's happening at the organization here. Was there an office pool on what day they're going to arrive?
Yes, I went.
She only called it the day before, but.
Justin comes in and says, D and B's downstairs. I went, yes.
It was interesting compared to previous years. You know, this is only our second year with D and D, and I really was anticipating it. I was, we knew it was going to happen soon. I felt like I was prepared for it, you know? It just felt different. I, I was more excited than, than, I don't know, alarmed, I guess. Sometimes is how you feel and, yeah.
I have never been part of a survey where we didn't find expired something.
Oh, yes.
And somebody been drilling holes for some reason on our fire doors. And there were no fire door findings. There were, I mean, so it was, there's a lot going that, and I'm not a clinical person, obviously, but there seems to be real purpose around the clinical processes that they bring up. Last year, it was suicide prevention, I believe. This year, it's around medications. And it's like, there's real, there's kind of purpose in what they're having this worked on, rather than just tiki-taki. So that was, that was.
And I loved their interaction with staff. Actually, when they were talking about medication ranges, they were like, you know, this is part of protecting you too, and that you're not working outside of your scope and making sure that, you know, it's not a liability for the organization too. That puts the organization at risk.
So, so if I understand some of that correctly, it's a physician may prescribe this, this, or this based on certain factors. And you have to be very careful to say, you know, if the pain level is one through three or four, or pick some measure that the nurse is following so they're not arbitrarily deciding which medication. That's right. So it's policy and training, and it's, it's good, good reminder.
I don't know if anyone else had comments. Thank you for choosing D and B. I think it is, it provides a lot of value.
Can you talk a little bit about the, what they call the ISO journey and?
Yeah, so they are themed with CMS to provide our surveys to credit us with CMS for conditions of participation. But part of what we sign up for when we join D and B is that their requirement is that you also become either ISO 9001 compliant or certified by your year three, which is the fourth survey. So ISO 9001 is a quality management system that can be applied to any business. It's not specific to healthcare. And it really just has principles about making sure that your organization is reliable, safe, provides the highest quality. And so we're going to have to, part of what they were talking about this time is, they said they sprinkle in ISO, is they are telling us about things we might want to be looking for to make sure that we will be ISO compliant by that fourth year. We do get to decide whether we want to go for certification or just compliance. If we choose to go for certification, I think there is a, there's a cost, but we also get more feedback each time they survey about how we're doing with ISO. It's going to take some education for all of us. It's a different way of thinking about our systems. I think there's a lot that we do that meets ISO, but I'm sure there will be some things too where it's like wrapping our brain around why you would have this systematic approach in, in this way and how we, we want to become compliant with that. So I'm, I'm sure I'm going to need to be providing education to you all and ourselves about, about it. We got some of that training, actually, the internal audit training. Rhonda and I attended, there's eight of us altogether. Trent was there. Cindy Kelly was really great. They went over ISO for the first day and a half. And it was, it's, it's really good. It's just, it's a different way of thinking. There's a lot of it that we do, but it'll be, it'll be some work.
Any questions?
Thank you.
So the next piece we want to talk about was the survey of patient safety culture. We have, this was as of 12/19. And today, we had 399 returned surveys out of 634. So we're at 63%, which is just awesome. I know our goal is 80%. It's a pretty lofty goal for a response rate, but I, I think we're going to get there. I really do.
If ice cream pants do look well.
Well, I hope so. $100 gift cards. So we are doing drawings for folks. We did one on Friday, and there'll be another one tomorrow for free $100 gift cards for people. So if you've completed your survey, you're in the drawing. So folks that submitted their surveys the earliest will be in the most drawings. They'll be in three more drawings. And then we do have reminder emails going out only to the people who have not responded. And so one went out, original invitation was on the night. We sent a reminder on the 18th and a second reminder on the 24th. So there'll be two more reminders on the 30th and then on the 5th.
So it sounds like things are going well as far as response rate goes. So you don't, as of right now, you don't need board members to be in the bushes?
There might be a few areas that folks might want.
Offer up a dunk tank. Or remember if we didn't go with that.
Yeah, I mean, we forecasted.
I'll do it.
Definitely have some areas that are 100% or 80% even. But there are some areas that, you know, they might appreciate a little encouragement.
I'm, I'm pretty certain we're going to get to 80%. It's 63%.
Yeah. So I, it's really good.
Okay, well, as you know, if you need any.
Is, is there any areas where Commissioner Gamba would help push you in the right direction?
How do you want to do that?
Or an email type thing would sound like.
Would, would it be best if you guys huddled, let them know? I think huddle probably.
Yeah, let us look at the reports. Because it would have made sense to go to a huddle. I mean, I'd love for you guys to go to.
We know what you're saying.
But you know what I'm saying? It's the people have already done it.
I get it.
And that's your, but maybe we can look at the reports on them. Make some, sometimes. Yeah, I think you're always. I feel like I saw this in there, but I can't find it and I can't remember when does it end?
I think so. I'm sorry, off the top of my head. I'm, I'm a little rumpy from the survey, to be honest, yeah.
We could talk to Mandy about maybe getting some preliminary results for the June meeting.
And we will, but I'm not going to put anything on poster boards or anything because I think that wouldn't be good without complete results. But I, I will certainly have, Amy's going to pull some themes and some things we can talk about just to.
That's what the TV just said.
Thanks.
Michelle.
Thanks, Michelle. 6-9, yeah, I thought the 11 was a little, I think it's a Tuesday.
Okay, so anyway, if you need any.
Okay, we will. And then I know there was a lot in my report about COVID. If you have any questions, talk about that, but otherwise.
Any questions about any report? So Zach, do you want to call our attention to anything on the dashboard?
No, I, I know we have a packed agenda. Pretty good.
Any questions from Andy about the dashboard or anything that you guys saw? All right, thank you, Andy. Next up, CEO, who's with us?
Yeah, I, Dr. Martin and I both attended the Family Medicine House provider meeting last night. And I, it's, I just wanted to comment that it is such a positive collaborative and problem-solving kind of meeting. I always will enjoy being invited to that. And it's an opportunity to get the providers there an update on what's going on, to harass them about filling out the survey of patient safety. But it's an excellent meeting, and I, I want to commend Stacy because as I was sitting there listening to what they're doing, just in the last few weeks, our clinics have rolled out rapid access, the pre-arch nurse systems, the prescription refills, and the back annex being done by pharmacy. And they also were rolling out a pharmacy tech apprenticeship program. So we have our first student joining there. And their opening schedule, so they're doing some open scheduling. For then, that's a, sort of, to begin look at how they can work by same day access. So just, you know, we're throwing a lot of change, a lot of different strategies to provide access, and they're taking it all in and just really rolling with it and talking about what's within our side. It's an impressive, it's a really uplifting meeting. There's that. I also wanted to mention, I put it in my report, this was Justin's last meeting as our executive assistant. In fact, June 3rd is Justin's wedding anniversary. So that his replacement, after an exhaustive search, we were able to find a replacement. And Mandy Weave will actually be joining us on June 3rd as well so that, that Justin can enjoy his anniversary. So officially effective June 5th, Mandy Weave will be back on the second floor. Other than that.
Good luck in your new job.
Yeah. I think he's negotiating a window and a larger desk.
I think I already got the window. It's larger monitors and an actual desk instead of a folding.
At last month's meeting, we had not included the 23 compliance work plan, 23 compliance work plan. So that was included in your packet this month. And the agreement we have with Cindy was that you would email her any questions or concerns you had about the plan. And she reported like this afternoon that she did not have any emails or calls. So we are asking for the approval of the 2023 compliance.
Okay, so hopefully it's been a chance to look at this. So do you guys have any questions or comments or any concerns about this?
This is done. Mission report of each, I appreciate the rehabilitation. I'm going to just wait out. It's. Listen to follow. I will let Cindy know.
Any questions?
I, I just, I just read it. It's all the quarters of 2023 quarters.
It's the 2023 work.
Any other questions or comments for movement or? Okay, so a motion to approve the 2023 compliance committee work plan. Moved by Erica, second by Terry. Any other discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right, thank you. Any questions for Julie? That's her report. All right, that it, Julie?
That's it.
Thank you. Next up, operations, we start with Dee Dee.
My report is on page 34 and 35 and is. The, the one thing I definitely do want to highlight, just to echo, you know, Mandy, the last couple of days was a whirlwind for me with D and B. And, you know, the ED part was really easy. So I wasn't, yeah. And the staff did great, that's sort of CCU and then our central sterile area. Surgery, all good phenomenal and quality review, case management. I'm just going to, I'll let you, I'm sure you've already read this, so I, I won't really call anything else out. The one area that still is one of my number one areas is, of course, the safety of the emergency department. And I just want the board to know that that is still one of my number one priorities. And we are continuing to figure out how we can assist the staff down there, you know, especially with the room safety. I think our training is phenomenal here, and we're so thankful that we do have the evade training. And just the last note with the emergency department is we're still actively searching for a replacement. We do still have our interim nursing director, Jason, and we do have an applicant that we're looking very seriously at. And hopefully, maybe we'll have some news next month.
I'm sure you've explained this before, but just to refresh my memory, evade training.
Evade is the company that we contract with that provides the de-escalation training. It has three different levels, one, two, and we did offer level three for the first time a couple of months ago. All new employees, when they are hired or not, we try to get them into the, that level one training. Right now, the next class isn't until August, so I think they come quarterly. They're usually here for a couple of days, and it's a four-hour class. They'll do level ones and twos, so hopefully we can get a staff member to do a nice eight-hour day. They do everything from just de-escalation training to also, you know, if the event becomes a little more heated, you know, their safety, how to, you know, not engage and hopefully not get hurt. And it's a phenomenal class. We're, we're really lucky. We've had the same instructor for several years coming to teach it.
Thank you. And then nurses that come up in the second quarter, nurses, do they just observe or are they actually doing?
The, for the, I'm sorry.
YBCC?
And for the second quarter, in the emergency department, they're, they're shadows. So it is observation. They, on the med search board, they are taking patients and working with their instructor.
That would be total, would it?
Oh, goodness.
Give or take.
I'm trying to just think of my, the roster. There's usually about 12 that are rotating around, and they give us a grid and shows where they are. And if they're in an area that doesn't have a lot of activity, we'll move them usually to the emergency department because there's, there's usually lots going on there. Awesome, yeah. Oh, we love students.
Any other questions or comments for Dee? Very good. All right, thank you very much, Dee. Next up is Rhonda Holden, Chief, Ms. Larry Austin.
Yes, my report is on page 36 and 37. And I think the only update I have is regarding our pharmacy technicians doing med refills for F and E. They've been doing around 80 to 100 to. They've been doing around 80 to 100 today. I asked Nasser for account for today to see what it was, what was going on for, just staple it that. And I haven't heard back from them yet, but that's really successful for launching on Monday. And just, a lot of people worked on this. Jen Chen is our lead pharmacist, that she's developed all the protocols and worked really hard on this pharmacy technician program. So a call out to her, you know, the clinic staff, Dr. Hibs, IT, they've had a lot that they've had to do to make sure that that message pools go to the correct person. Instead of going to the clinic, they now go to pharmacy, to Jen's group. So it's been a lot of work for everybody. We really appreciate it.
The process was prior.
The medical to clinic medical system that would get that refill order. And then based on a protocol written by the physicians, they would approve that refill or have them make another appointment or have them get some labs drawn, something like that.
Taking a load off the.
Of the MAs. And I think much fewer touches from the provider themselves is what we're hearing, which is pretty good.
Not as much as we anticipated. So I think because of the protocols are going directly to the providers for clarification or if there's issues. Whereas before, the MA could handle a lot of it. So we're not seeing a lot go, but the providers knew that there's definitely possibility they may be seeing more as the protocols have changed.
And that's a really good thing because I saw that, I know it worked with Fluence Health. And we, I helped them start the one up there. And it really reduced a lot of hassle for the physicians. And it also increased better refills for the patients. So I'm really excited that we're going to help keep Kedaz County in the voting lot zone by keeping the patients getting their prescriptions a lot easier and reducing some of the hassles for the providers so they can take care of the patients a lot better.
Well, and it touches on so many things we're working on, the number of phone calls that are coming in because of prescription refills. Those are being handled efficiently now, so people aren't having to call back. Again, that sort of noise level or busyness among the clinical staff and the clinics have all been pulled out so they can focus on patients. So, but it's not easy. It's, and it's changed and they just kind of say, bring it, let's see. So, and yesterday, I do want to say at the provider meeting at Family Medicine Ellensburg, Dr. Hibs could not say enough good things about Jen. He just thinks that her drive and her attention to detail, that it is really a huge factor in the success of that.
She's fantastic. And Ron's working on locating them in the lobby of the MAC annex, that desk space that was formerly the reception area for Dr. Amy. He's got his team remodeling so that we can put them all just right there together, which will be really nice to use of that space. So I think you're about to get that.
Just wait and have those.
Dividers, dividers for sound privacy so that they're not sitting right next to each other, talking to people who are hard of hearing on the phone. So. It's been good so far.
Great. Other questions?
Yeah, two.
So the emergency services consulting international meeting. How did that go?
Three of us attended. Interesting to. Yeah, their perspective was, listen, we knew EMS was off the table, so that's why we never talked to you. We're not going to touch it, this is all about fire. Half of their report was about EMS. So we felt like that was, they either sort of padded the report or that was a little disintenuating, one of the two. So that would be mine.
Yeah, I think that they were, they were really saying that unless Hospital District Two came to them and said, we don't want to do EMS services anymore in Upper County, they weren't going to touch it, only if we wanted it. And they, I think we shared a lot about the relationship between Hospital District One and Hospital District Two and the services provided by each. I think they went away with a lot more understanding of what was happening in our county as far as EMS. It's not just fire. Fire is the only thing that they had looked at. And then if you read the report, it's fire and EMS, regional authority throughout the whole plan, over and over and over again. So not consulting EMS or Hospital District Two is pretty significant.
The other thing, the local there, IFF, represents the paramedics and medical line and also the professional firefighters at Fire District Seven. And for the first time, they have come out and endorsed the fire commissioner candidate. And it's a round decision.
And then the. Round that and this patient billing.
It's a slow moving committee.
Yeah.
I thought you met now.
We have, we've met twice.
So what's the intent of that? Is that just to kind of? Explore different options as far as?
Right, yeah. One of the things that I think is really significant for this issue is that ambulance services are often out of network, which is really just kind of surprising to even think about. Because how do you choose that you're in or out of a network when you have an emergency and need an ambulance? So I think, you know, there, there may be some discussion about, you know, what can we do about that? Should there be changes made in how insurance is cover ambulance services? So it's, it's that piece of it. The network, that's what they're calling network adequacy, to be in network, out of network. There's probably plenty of ambulances, it's just whether or not you are in the right spot when you need it. That's what it sounds like. And then the other piece is just how do you inform consumers? What type of disclosure can you have to them on the cost? And a lot of that isn't really feasible in the field because you're not going to loan somebody into the ambulance and say, you know, your insurance, here, sign here. Your, your insurance may not cover this and you may get a bill. So it's teasing up some of those issues. And how is that different than from a transport from hospital to hospital as opposed to an emergency transport? And then we're having lots of discussions about just how services are covered for EMS because we only get paid when we transport. And we do a whole lot, like Upper County's about 50% of the calls don't result in transport. So all that's done for free.
Free medical care. Medics and then, I don't want to go, I'll drive.
Yeah, I'm fine. Yeah. So it's, it's been interesting.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Being ground ambulance just doesn't touch all areas.
No, they've already gone through a committee structure for air.
I'll just remind you that Rhonda represents every rural EMS service in the country, so no pressure. She is the only rural representative.
Yeah, I think I am the only rural representative.
Fix it.
Right.
Are there any questions? All right, thank you, Rhonda. Next up, Stacy O'Leary, Chief of Public.
My report starts on page 38. I thought I'd update you with rapid access statistics. As of this morning, we have seen 156 patients through rapid access. Our busiest days are Mondays and Fridays and our slowest right now are Wednesdays and Saturdays. We're definitely seeing an impact in the community by having that open. Other than that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Is this the, is this the? Is this what you expected in terms of?
We started out a little bit slower intentionally, we blocked the schedules. Mary is a brand new nurse practitioner and Chris is new to serums. We usually lighten the load a little bit. And we're still seeing about 15 patients a day. We've got the capability during the week to probably see close to 30.
I would go really quick, the service has kind of watched the rapid access process and it looked to be very functional. So it was really good. And any of the people that were trying to beat the rapid access didn't seem sad and whiny at all. So the rapid access is succeeding in its beginning, so that's really good.
We've got a paper patient satisfaction survey we're using and then we'll do the 90 day report out once the end of July.
I don't know if this is a question for you or for, or for you, Michelle? But how are we getting the word out on rapid access?
We're not. We're really relying right now on the clinic communication because we're working on a soft rollout. And so the plan is that when a patient calls in, because they need to be seen, if they can't get into their provider, then the PSRs, then route them to rapid access. We're also starting some soft communication inside the clinics themselves through our digital reader boards and phone messages. Or messages that you hear overhead that talk about the service. And we have some rack cards in-house to talk about the service. Because it's KVH patient only, that, you know, kind of prohibits some of the external advertising. When Stacy gives me the green light, another thing I'm going to do is send out a message through the portal. So patients are aware of this service and they know that it's available.
I would say, talking with Colin and the two providers, they feel like they're probably ready to start doing some marketing. The Saturdays have been really slow and they feel if our patients knew we were open, they'd probably seek care. But not.
There's my green light.
Yep, that is the green light. I will let them know.
Is that because most people are not calling their primary on Saturday morning saying, can you squeeze me in because they are not open any nights?
Correct. We are getting some from the providers who've been on call on Saturday and they appreciate the fact that they've got somewhere to send those patients. So we are getting a few of that. I think our first Saturday, we saw seven, one, our second Saturday, we saw seven. And I think we were back down to four on this last Saturday. So if people knew, they would probably walk in and show up.
All right, thank you.
I have a question for you about women's health, some clarification, not accepting new GYN patients. That's even if they're established in the KVH system, if they're needed at clinic. And around these patients, do you have, how long?
That is usually managed by the providers. I know Dr. Hibs has been working with Dr. Dawson. Dr. Martin, do you know anything?
It's a temporary state of affairs until we get our, our staffing up to where we need it to be. And we were making some good headway there. We have another provider starting in July, as we'll get to in a few pages. But we also have some interviews coming up and I think we have some good candidates on the, on the line.
And Anna Phillips is saying OB patients there, what's the?
She is doing some OB visits there too, along with GYN.
What are we, like, patients who need to establish GYN care, are we asking if you put it at me?
We are working with the PCB to see if we can partner with them to keep it. Otherwise, if it's something too complex, they are giving them options of where else they could go from there.
I was just going to say, current patients, are they able to get in and see their providers for the most part in a reasonable amount of time?
Are you talking OB or? For the most part, if I look at my next third available. We're doing pretty good for family practice. Internal med is phenomenal, we've got two locums there, so we're able to get them. FMCE is struggling a little bit more. They're taking longer to get in. They're seeing a lot more same day patients though.
Anecdotally, I just had somebody who contacted me recently to say that they've been a patient for quite a while and they tried to get an appointment and the first appointment wasn't until August and they were just frustrated. So I wasn't sure if there's an anomaly or?
It sometimes depend, depends upon which provider you're seeing. Dr. Thomas at FMCE is booked out much further than the APCs. Dr. Feng is booked out pretty far in internal med. And then I know Dr. Stone and Dr. Casey at FM, he are usually booked a little further.
And that's actually part of what we're trying to alleviate with rapid access is we can provide other pathways to get care. We recognize that we can't manage the, the schedule so that we have somebody, so that I can guarantee you that your doctor is available day after tomorrow. But this isn't unique to us. This is at least a regional, if not national phenomenon. And that's what I recommended to them and they actually ended up using rapid access. So in what you're talking about, which is good, we had that option.
The other thing FMCE is going to do, we can't rule it out until July because of schedules. But the provider on call is pretty much going to have an open calendar. We're hoping we can get our ED follow-ups, urgent care follow-ups on there. Their Medicare wellness visits those days, but then also be able to handle any walk-ins. We have usually about 10 patients who walk up to FM and ask to be seen same day. So if we can use our on-call provider for that, we can free up some of those holds on our other providers where their follow-up can actually be scheduled for their patients.
Along the same lines on third available appointments for like neuro and cardio. So if they're emergent or we can't get in, they're gone. But urgent patients that need to be seen probably within three to four weeks, are we purring those out?
They triage and they work really closely with the nurses, Dr. Hobbie and Amy to, if there's a question, do we need to see them now? Where can we get them on the SCAT before looking at sending them somewhere else? Some of the data that we're looking at in the June 3rd meeting includes the referrals in, in, from our system into our system and then those that are being referred out as well. So we can see, you know, where that capacity is generating out migration for our existing services. And then another budget that Tricia's working on is services that you don't provide and how many referrals out of the community is that generating? So it should give the board a sense of where the urgency to expand that.
Other questions for Stacy?
Just a comment, I'm reading that a couple of locum in internal medicine are too good and we're going to have some angry citizens for the opposite reason that, you know, they were so happy with service they're getting and these people have to part.
We're, we're working to try to convert. I know Dr. White has extended and Dr. D is talking about coming back in January. So, and Dr. White will be back after a break in the summer also and stay through the seventh. So they are sticking around, they enjoy the work here and they enjoy the patients, but it's hard to convert them. We're trying.
Any questions? Thank you, Stacy. Up we have Michelle Worrell, Chief Public Relations Officer. Michelle?
Hey, guys. I really don't have any updates. I'll jump in a little bit on some topics that Scott has, but I am happy to take any questions that you might have.
So you, you've got some notes on the farmers market. What, what sort of things are you going to do for each of these events? Do you have something specific in mind or what makes these topics the topic for the day?
Absolutely, and I wish Alicia was still there because I didn't go further in here. But for each of these days, she has things planned out generally with some type of hands-on activity and/or like a game people can play. I know for animal therapy, the plan is to have our therapy dog Barrett there. Hands-on CPR will be exactly that, there'll be some learning and demonstration. I, I can bring back to you the specifics, but I, I don't know them all right off the top of my head.
Well, it's just good to know you've got actual activities planned, that's great to draw people in and.
Absolutely, absolutely.
So you're going to have a. Sorry, Michelle, go ahead.
Well, I was just going to call, I guess the one thing I could call out is the Senior Health Fitness Day. That's happening next week, Wednesday, in the Mountain View Park. We're up to 20 vendors right now. She's got hands-on activities that are going on about every 15 to 30 minutes. There's going to be some live music. Really, it looks like we're getting a lot of involvement from people that service our community. So hopefully, you know, spread the word, get people there. We'll be there all morning and I'm excited to see how this first event, we're getting great represent, representation from our ancillary services, our clinic services, our hospital services and many, many community members, gyms. We've got Gallery One, even emphasizing the importance of art therapy. So it'll be a good day. Hope you guys might be able to swing by.
I was glad to hear that June, at our retreat, you're going to talk a little about health equity.
Very much so. There, so you may remember that we're following the roadmap from AHA and Minneapolis, this Minneapolis conference was 100% about that. Very practical examples and tools that we can use. So we're not reinventing the wheel when it comes to scripting, print material, even workflow with our PSRs, ways to communicate with our patients. And just really, it was, I, I wish everyone could have heard it because I, I know there's a lot of fear around the implementation and what this means. And I didn't hear any stories, negative stories. You'll have your one-off. But people, a lot of institutions went into it with fear and have found how positive it is. And in, in general, their, their staff are appreciative of the efforts and when the public understands why we're doing it, it tends to make a lot more sense as well.
Yeah. Great. I'm looking forward to that.
Good.
Any other questions for Michelle? Thanks for arranging our shirts, Michelle.
Yeah, no problem.
Okay, next up Jeff, Jeff Yamada, Chief Information Officer. Jeff?
Yep. My report, I believe, starts on page 48. A couple of things to highlight. Two weeks ago, we had Dr. Michelle Flemings here from Cerner. She's the Senior Physician Executive. Day and a half visiting with us. I, we did not request her, but I think knowing that we were about to extend on our contract. Plus just the relationship of what we have with Cerner as well as other community works hospitals, I think we were sort of targeted to give a lot of input, not only in the current system, but maybe in the system for the future. So she interacted with a lot of providers. Not sure if Dr. Hoppy was able to meet with her. I know we're scheduling something.
Yeah, I had, I was notified the day before it was planned, so I couldn't rearrange.
Yeah, but I know she met with Dr. Hibbs, Dr. Thomas, Dr. Stone, Merle Tesco. So she met with a lot of providers as well. But it was great to have her. She said the same thing that DMV mentioned about our culture and you know, all of our collaboration and openness. So that was great as well. Outside of that, I think that was the extent of my report.
I think it's worth noting that we are at the end of our contract with Cerner and we will be re-upping for, did you go five or seven?
Five.
Five years before the the cost will be the same and we're looking at, rather than adding a lot of products, they offered us optimization with their teams for the products we are, yeah, which I, it sounded like was really, really low.
Yeah, so we have identified a couple of areas already where we'll be going in to do some optimization. Any other questions?
Any questions for Jeff?
Cyrus, go ahead.
Jeff, Eric and I did a gamble, a month or so go down the emergency department. And one thing we noticed was as the people jump from machine to machine and have to log in, there seemed to be a little bit of frustration of, you know, when they log in, it's not just their credentials, but it's waiting for Cerner to load up. Am I recalling accurately, possibly a friction point for people that work down there?
Was this on the laptops?
A mixed laptops, little portable workstations. It just, it was kind of a note. It felt like they were, as I recall, it, it took a minute or more every time they logged in to a specific patient to get it loaded. And, and they used to comment, they're often jumping from room to room and, you know, back to the desk. And they just were asking, you know, do we know if there's any way to speed this up? You know, I know they're big databases and, you know, are we, you know, are we giving them the computers that are as quick as possible to access those databases? Or is this even a friction point that you've been made aware of?
Yeah, so I have not heard that specifically. We can definitely check. What we did do though, coming in was we're previously always going by minimal specs. And so one of the things that, you know, through experience is, you know, when, when you get to minimal specs is basically time to replace everything. And so one of our strategies from a couple of years ago was to make sure that we're way above our current specs, which we, we've done on most of the rollouts. And so we'll, we'll go back down and double check. We are about to, I was about to take a look at the interim ED director chatted, he and I chatted about some of the laptop mobile carts that are down there and I really want a better solution for that that's basically all together. And so that, that is probably coming in the, in the near future to upgrade all of those as well. So.
Hopefully the badge cap stuff will speed up at least the entry point into these. And so, and Eric, am I remembering this correctly? Was there a bit of frustration with logging into machines or?
I know that I was hopping towards that and slow when things were slow and logging in. I knew that I felt frustrated for them that it was, that it takes a long time, just the workflow, the interruption of, I don't know how to describe it other than just really wasted time, just waiting for something to happen. And even if it's just a matter of newer seconds, it really adds up.
Again, that was, that was a whole shift, a minute here, a minute there, it starts to add up to real time. And so again, I know we're all working to solve this. I just, you know, wanted to use my hope to just say, you know, anything we can do to support efficiency down there, we, we'd like to do that. So.
Yeah, thank you. And then we can, we can also look at backend data, actually in Cerner about load times and other stuff in comparison. So, great. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments for Jeff?
So the complete backup, you reduce it from five days to 15 hours? Both of those numbers are somewhat shocking. How, how big is this backup? Is it just pulling from every computer in the hospital when it does a backup or what, what is happening?
No, this is mainly around all of our images, images. Yep. So which is.
Large, large files.
Very, very large, yeah.
And, and so how many total backups do we have at a given time? I mean, you, like, are you overriding an older backup when you write a new backup? And we don't endlessly store this stuff by itself.
Yeah, no, we, we do multiples, right? So we do a complete backup every month. But inside of that, we do weekly backups and we do basically intermittent backups. And so what the, the intermittent backups do is basically they join all together to make another complete backup as well. And so there's multiple different backups that are happening basically throughout the week, throughout the month, throughout the day, actually. So.
And are we primarily backing up to prevent data loss due to malfunction or to protect against virus or ransomware or all of the above?
Basically all of the above. And so some of our new backup, it's not in place yet, but it is specifically around immutable storage, right? So backup storage that isn't, can be touched by malware, viruses, ransomware. That's gonna be happening here shortly as well. So.
And how are we filtering the backup to make sure it's not potentially pulling malware with it into the backup or a virus? Is it going through anything particular or just using our standard virus protection systems that are in place?
Yeah, we have now through, you know, the last two years, we have all kinds of technology that detects any type of potential malware in the system. We also have a contracted services that helps us monitor 24/7. If there is any other activity down to the workstation, if they see something suspicious and they will actually block that workstation as well. And so we have now, you know, through the years evolved and have multiple, multiple different technologies and detections. Right now, we're doing a proof of concept for identity management as well. And so this is where it's now taking individuals and learning their, basically their daily activities. So anything that looks outside of that norm, we will get a warning that there are some, you know, unusual activities that is happening that we can also mitigate as well. So. Totally different than what we, we had a few years ago.
Well, thank you and I appreciate what you and your team do for the hospital. So thanks.
Thank you.
It looks like staff are becoming more fishing savvy according to this, this crowd.
Yeah, we, I just looked before this meeting and our, our, our latest fishing test just completed and we were at 5.3%. So as I, I think I mentioned in there, our goal after the 12 months and we're coming up probably another couple of months. After 12 months, we would like to be at least at a 5% rate and we are really close. So.
I look forward to my little test as a chance to succeed, you know, send that one along to IT.
Great.
Any other questions for Jeff? Thank you, Jeff.
Thank you.
Next up, we have Ron Erlacher, Chief of Facility.
I think just on my report for completion rate, we're now separating out, we've divided our PMs into critical and non-critical because we're really held two different standards for those types of PMs. And so the criticals are, are all the like safety PMs. Everything that comes under that would just all the utility PMs and fire alarm and so on. And so those were, we have to hit that at 100%. By DMP standards and ultimately CMS standards. So we separated those out. The non-critical PMs are, we're only at 90% of the completion rate. So just knowing going forward that we're tracking those separately. And so that's, we just started that this year. So that hardly represents that. Project wise, I think you probably had a chance to look at all that, but notably we've finished the air handler conversion for this air handler up here and the one that serves surgery in that one very, very well. That work is complete and the rest of that energy project is, will be delayed as it happens during the expansion projects. For the expansion project, or several things we've hit coming out of the ground that are delayed our project.
Speaking of air.
Yeah, with in between, you know, the creek flooding and, and filling up the hole where they were pouring their forms and having to deal with that. And having to move that firewall that they're now just doing. So that hall had to go through the city to get approved. And so that's set us back some and then we had the contaminated soil that, that set us back. We had to take care of that. We held up 725 tons of material. We went through three tests. We finally got a clean report. So we're through with that now. So a lot of these hurdles were kind of front loaded and we're being kind of passive, but it's pushing our schedule out.
Well, you've all had a chance to review for this. So you guys have any questions or comments for Ron?
Yeah, go ahead. All right. So the, the water, the delay and the water. If we've not been delayed, we'd still have to be mitigating the water or it just would have, the water issues where they came a little bit later in the project. In other words, if we'd started on time, we'd be dealing with all this pumping that you're having to deal with.
We would have avoided that.
We would have avoided it?
We would have avoided it, yes.
And then on your project costs, your two green bars, the upper one, it says it includes actual cost to date. So that's including some of the expenses of this delay and the 27.
Okay, it includes all those.
So we still have a cushion because of all of our contingencies, but we're eating into those cushions very early in the project. Great, thank you.
Anybody else have, have any questions or comments for Ron? All right. Next up, Chief of Staff, Dr. Hoppy.
Thank you. My report's on page 70, 71 and 72. As you can tell, the medical executive committee's been very busy credentialing people. And so we approved five candidates for initial appointment, all kind of revolving around the contract we have with the emergency room. We've got six people up for reappointment. And the MECH is doing a very good job at vetting everyone. I think we might have to clone Shannon. She's been very busy with everything as we move forward. So she's, she's doing a great job.
You guys have all had a chance to review these, these people for initial appointments and reappointments. You guys have any?
Yeah, go ahead. You want to have a motion to approve?
Yeah, at a moment. Any, any other, any questions or comments about these, about these candidates before we take a motion to approve? All right, Terry.
I move to approve.
All right, Terry moves to approve this list for initial appointment and reappointment. Second from Jeff. Any questions or comments before we take the vote? All those in favor of approving credential, credentialing for these initial appointments, reappointments list, please say all right. All right, thank you. And then Dr. Hoppy, I appreciate you coming and talking to us about what MEC decided regarding vascular surgery, surgery delineation of privileges.
Yeah, I, I think it's kind of notable to kind of do kind of a look back a little bit as to why this is even kind of on the docket, why we're talking about it in general. And I think part of this comes down to when we decide to add a new service line to a hospital system. You know, how do we go about doing that? And is it as simple as just hiring a surgeon and say, hey, show up and, you know, let's go ahead and start these procedures? Or is it like, should we really step back and say, okay, what should we really be doing here? And what's in alignment with the potential of the organization? So, and I think that's an important point. And I certainly took that into consideration when I devised the delineation of privileges for cardiology. I did not list the fanciest and the greatest ablation therapies and everything that I was capable of doing. I really thought hard about it and thought about, okay, what can I do here in this community really well, really safely? At least in the beginning and in, in the future, if I wanted to expand upon it, I thought, okay, we can add things as we go. So I think when our vascular surgeon came, he was very talented and had a lot of great skill sets with him. But just because someone can do it, the question is, should we be? And so this really came to our discussion in, at the MECH level. And so we decided to sit down and review the delineation of privileges for vascular surgery. And they just happened to be the first ones that are lucky enough to go through this process. I think this is important that we do this every so often in every one of the departments because things are changing. You know, what we were doing in vascular surgery or cardiology 10 years ago is very different than what we're doing today. And so we really need to stay on top of this and amend these delineation of privileges every couple of years and make sure we're, we're up to date. So we sat down, I sat down with Dr. Ponor myself and everyone has a delineation of privileges. And it's, it's very similar to the previous delineation of privileges. However, we took a, a couple of those delineation of privileges off. And those were really kind of more high-risk type vascular procedures that we thought that probably require backup that we don't have onsite backup. So for example, if we needed an interventional vascular radiologist in the middle of the night, we may not have that. Okay, if we needed to infuse large volume of blood products, we may not have that. And so we modified this list and we took off a couple of those types of procedures. And this list was also vetted after Dr. Ponor and I looked at it. We also vetted with our vascular surgeon and that made him aware of it and made sure if there was anything he wanted to add. And we actually added a few things that he was already doing, but wasn't on this list. Okay? So I'm happy to take any questions that anyone may have.
One of the things I always, I thought was interesting at MEC was you, you're not taking privileges away from, from the doctor exactly. Because if you were to just remove privileges from the doctor, that's reportable. That's what I heard. What you're doing is you're changing, if I'm getting language wrong, like scope, scope of practice. Is that correct? And so could, could you say just a couple, a couple of words about that? Cause I thought it was interesting.
And so, um, could, uh, could you say just a couple, a couple of words about that? Cause I thought it was interesting how you're trying to thread the needle there, cause.
Right, right. So, you know, um, we're not saying that someone is not, um, capable or doing something or, 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 um, they're, they're not qualified, shall we say, of doing something. It's more, this is the scope of practice here at our institution. So like my privileges here might be different than my delineation of privileges at a, at a different institution. So you can't really take it personally. And I think that's the important thing that the providers need to understand. This is not about them or whether they're capable or not. It's about what, what can we do here and what should we be doing here?
Yeah. Well, I was really impressed with the, with the discussion that, that you guys had at MEC uh, about how constructively approached it and, and how you sort of, um, addressed it, you know, keeping all these things in mind so that it's not, you know, it's not some sort of reportable removal of privileges and, but it's also addressing, addressing this issue. And I, and I, I think it's really, uh, very positive to sort of move forward and think about, you know, reviewing this regularly. Anyway, I, I just thought that you guys did a great job with that. And I, I appreciate you coming and explaining this to the.
Just the technology change, the last fifteen, twenty years in healthcare in general has just grown so much, you know, the ability to diagnose and treat. So, yeah, I think it's a great idea to be looking at all the privileges to see if it's still our organization.
And I think it's a good lesson as we add new service lines too. Uh, I think this has been, it's, it's been a really good eye-opening experience for everyone.
And Jeff, did you have anything?
Um, well, I would echo what, what you just said. It was fascinating to listen to the discussion and again, trying to, um, be good for the community, provide the services we can, but do them well, do them safely. And, and like you said, maybe grow organically as, you know, as we, you know, the bigger we can revisit some of these, but, but again, we've got to do things that are good for the patients. Um, I kind of envisioned, the, the, the end summary for me was there's, there's, there's two, two checklists, but what the provider is able to do and then what KVH is able to support. You have to check both sides in order to move forward with that procedure. And it's not for a lack of skill set of that particular provider, but it's making sure. And I know I was hearing from a few of this follow-up staff members, a little bit of that stress level. If we did a complicated procedure, do we have the follow-up care we need? And like you said, in the middle of the night, if something happens, we're not this big, huge hospital. We have people on call and so forth. So I think, you know, I think it's very good to make these decisions. And, and was he okay with kind of how this laid out when you?
Oh, yeah.
And yet.
Absolutely, absolutely. Because there's other, uh, centers where we can send people that need that kind of support under those type of complex procedures where they do have like people on call twenty-four seven, should they run into a problem. So, yeah, it's very receptive.
Good.
So, uh, you know, John and I were there and, uh, Dr. Hoppy, I think did a really good job of explaining it here. I appreciate the, having us here. But, uh, the other members of the board, you guys on, on top of this, you feel like you, you know what's going on? Cause it is really kind of that interesting thing. And I, and I, I appreciate you coming, Dr. Hoppy, to explain it to the, the board. I, I sort of asked, uh, to come and explain it to you guys. You guys feel like you're, you're on top of this.
Yeah, I sure do.
Periodically, we will be seeing other specialties come through for revision or clarification.
Yes, I've asked the department chairs to, um, you know, get on kind of a rotating basis. So you might, this may, this is just the first set coming forward. You might see other sets to more um, accurately reflect what they're doing in twenty twenty-three.
Can I just add one thing, one more thought as we get, as we mature in this process is, um, there's, what, what can we currently do? And do safely? And, um, and I love the example of blood. I mean, if you need a high volume of blood product, we not only don't have a high volume here, we're not able to get it. So that's one of the considerations. But there's also the question of what does our community need? And we have a role in providing those services, even if we might not be providing them here. Dr. Zaman, I believe, is booked out twelve weeks. I mean, there's clearly a need for vascular services in this community. And we're, we're doing the right thing by providing those services. The, the nurses, the clinical staff want to support this service. And they, they are saying, what's the next thing we can add back? But, you know, the first thing we need to do is stabilize this program, get to know how, how these patients move through our system and influence our system, what support we need to provide to the patients when they come here for those services. But we can't lose track of the fact that this need is out there in the community, whether it's dialysis. I know Dr. Martin's working on serving our, uh, inpatients who you may have a, a need for dialysis during their stay. So I think this is a really valuable act, exercise in balance.
Yeah, the privileges change in the future, it seems plausible that they could, depending on need and our ability here to support that. Will we see this come across again for approval? Or does that a function of MEC and we'll just be notified or how does that work?
Yeah, I think you'll probably be notified or have to vote on it again, uh, as this comes through. That's my understanding.
So would, we would actually have to vote on this?
Um, I actually checked with Shannon and that is best practice. So.
All right. So, uh, we're asking for a, a vote that, uh, the new delineation of privileges for vascular surgery. Is that correct?
Do you need a motion or just direct a vote?
I think we'd probably get a motion, but, uh, are there any, uh, questions or do you guys have any other, uh, questions you need answered before we take a vote? All right. So, uh, do I have a motion to approve this new delineation of privileges for vascular surgery? John, voting. And you said second. Bob, Bob seconds it. All right. So all those in favor then, please say aye. All right. Thanks a lot, Dr. Hoppy. Appreciate it. Okay. Um, next up is our Chief Medical Officer, Dr. Martin. Dr. Martin, go ahead.
And my report begins on page seventy-three. I apologize that I inadvertently left the last sentence in the first paragraph from last month's report. Um, so that what it describes as having just happened, happened two months ago and what was coming up has in fact happened. Um, I do want to call out the work that went into crafting the vascular surgery privileges and and in particular, Dr. Doctors Hoppy, Pnoyer and Zaman. Um, everything I've heard and seen suggests is a very collaborative process and I think we wound up in a good place. The other thing I want to call out is I wasn't able to make the announcement last month, um, but we have reached an agreement with Evergreen Anesthesia Associates. And they will be beginning to provide services for us in July. And without, I'll take any questions.
Questions for Dr. Martin?
I'm just curious, under posted positions, physician, uh, nothing on internal. Is that a conscious choice or?
Forgive me, my Apple universe, somebody tried to make a phone call and knocked Zoom out of, out of the way. Um, it is, we're, uh, looking at providing those services with, uh, either internists or family physicians who want to practice adult medicine. Um, and you'll be hearing more about that in, in the coming months, but, um, we are exploring the possibility of rebranding that clinic.
Understandable. Thank you.
Other questions for Dr. Martin? Thank you, Dr. Martin.
Thank you.
Before we leave operations, I did just want to note that there are a number of us here between now and the next meeting. Um, it's become a common, relatively common practice for EMS ambulances on the west side of the mountains to carry their own supply of blood. So we have been approached by KBFR and MedOne now as well, or just KBFR?
Well, she was representing both.
To see if we can partner with them, uh, to provide blood to the ambulance. As blood is a commodity here, a scarce commodity here. So we're going to sit down with them with yes in mind and see if we're able to do.
Imagine that can drastically change, improve outcomes. There's a, there's a lot of boxes to tick before we give them.
Okay, thank you. Uh, that being said, now we're moving on into the Chief Financial Officer, Scott. Hold on, let me, Scott.
I think we have, uh, Tom Dingus from DZA on the line. And, uh, prior to, I think I've done a few accounting staff. Um, Tom's going to be talking about, uh, standing audit report. And I wanted to introduce the people in the room here. We have a really good indelible, Paul Hutchinson. And on, um, on the screen, we can have James Savonin and then other members of the team that, uh, helped with this are Deborah Connors, Tara Anderson, Vicky Sturkle, and, uh, Mary Ann Fox, and then Jason Adler, you see Jason. But anyway, we've got an excellent group of finance staff and, uh, there is a reason these are the, these individuals are awesome that Tom's going to talk about, uh, very, very good audit. And I will turn this over to Tom.
All right. Thanks, Scott. Um, I'm Tom Dingus from DZA and, um, I think most of you've remember from years past and given the audit presentation, um, I'm going to share screen, hey? So we can watch the PowerPoint as we go along here. Um, you know, please ask questions as we go. And I'll just kind of get going here. It's just, I think most of you know who we are, but CPA firm located in Spokane Valley, Washington. Five partner, about forty, forty-five people firm work with, um, just really healthcare. Ninety-five percent of what we do is healthcare. Mostly with critical access hospitals and other rural healthcare, um, through the Western and Central United States. And about half the public hospital districts and critical access hospitals in the state of Washington. So quick introduction. Agenda, we'll go through the independent auditors' reports and then I'll kind of a few financial statement key points. And then some of the, the items of things that you would want to know as a board from your auditors. So, okay, bounce along here pretty quick. Is on, if you're following along in the financial statements, I'll give you the page numbers. You can just follow along with the PowerPoint as well. Um, on page, pages one through three, it's the first of the three auditors' reports. It is an unmodified opinion, which means that the financial statements that follow present fairly the financial position changes and financial position and cash flows of the district. It is what you wanted to say, what you hope it to say. So it does say that. There is one emphasis of matter paragraph as there was a new lease standard that came into effect in twenty twenty-two for the district. And we'll kind of touch on that a couple of times through the presentation because it did have some impact on the financial statements of some significance. Pages four through eight, and I'm going to go through these in, in any myself, but I do think they're probably, if you're going to go back to the financial statements at a later date, there are the four or five pages that would give you a great summary of what happened and the financial information. It's prepared by management. It's got condensed financial statements and the narrative that goes with the financial statements, kind of the story that tells what happened during the year. So a good, real good reference point in the financial statements. If you only wanted to read five pages, that would probably be the five pages to read. Going on a couple more pages is the asset part of the balance sheet. And I'm just going to, I'm going to go through every number. I mean, if you want me to do that. Um, but, um, just kind of hit on the high points, cash and cash equivalents. And then further down, um, there's investments internally designated for capital acquisitions. We had twenty-two million, two point, twenty-two point seven million of cash and cash equivalents and thirty-six million or so set aside for capital acquisitions. Your, kind of your cash on hand, that's that you can, even though you've internally designated it is, um, at your discretion, what you can do with it as the board. That represents about a hundred and ninety-four days cash on hand, which is really good reserves. Given these presentations, I'd say ninety is the minimum you want to have. And then another ninety for capital reserve. So where you're at a really strong position from a reserves point of view. Uh, cost reports, settlements, estimated third-party payer settlements. This year it's a receivable. There are some, you know, it, there's several years outstanding. So there's a little bit of from each year, kind of still hanging out there until they're final settled by Medicare. But as a critical access hospital, your cost base for inpatient outpatient skilled swing in the rural health clinics, um, which means some year you get interim payments during the year. So some years you're going to get additional payments through the cost report as it gets true up the cost. And some years there's payables as it gets true up the cost. It happens to be less than the interim payment. So part of being a critical access hospital is that settlement each year. Receivable, payable, neither one's really good or bad. It's just the true up of interim cost to actual costs. The other num, couple of numbers that are new and different this year on the asset side is the fifteen point three million dollars um, of the proceeds for your construction project that I heard you talking about earlier from your revenue bonds. Um, that's the bond proceeds that will be spent on the project. There is a lease receivable. The new lease standard for government organizations, the Government Accounting Standards Board standard on leases has standards for lessees, which we'll talk, see in a couple, cup, in a slide or two. But it also affects when you're the lessor and you do have a lease or you lease property that Canyon View Physical Therapy Building to another, another party. So that shows up as a lease receivable. That's a net present value of that lease receivable. So kind of a new thing on the balance sheet. And then when you get to the S, the liability side, the, the main new things here is the lease liabilities. You see how much they're quite a bit higher and I'll have a slide later to list that out. But now all, pretty much all leases that are more than short-term, less than a year, um, of non-cancellable terms, end up with a liability on the recorded on the balance sheet. And then also the right-to-use asset, which is included in the capital assets on the previous page. So it's, it mostly just affects the balance sheet. There's very little impact on expenses. It nets out to about the same impact on expenses. But it does increase the amount of assets, capital assets on the asset side and the amount of liabilities on the liability side. So it is a change there. You can see that number there and we'll get back to that. The other, the other big change in the financial statements is the quirky, um, accounting standard that comes about when you get your health insurance for your employees through the, the PEB is because part of the PEB joining that you have, you're providing retirees will get subsidized health insurance through the PEB. And because they're earning it as, while they're employees of the district and because you just went into it this year, it kind of, it all becomes earned this year. So it has a, you're kind of all or nothing in and it works when you go in, it's all in and you record all, a lot of expense the first year and then it'll, it'll go up and down a little bit through the years. And if you were to leave the PEB, it would all go away. So it's, it's a quirky, non-cash liability and expense that shows up on both the balance sheet and the income statement. So it does kind of show up in here in a strange sort of way. But there's the three point eight six actuarially determined um, liability that's based on both an implicit and explicit subsidies for retirees with the explicit being the amount that gets paid by the state of Washington for each retiree.
Other states doing the same thing? Is that, is this like pretty common or is this a unique?
Is. It's unique in Washington State that they, that the state auditor's office has said that it's, it's a liability, it's an obligation of each agency. I honestly think that's, it makes sense on one level because it is getting earned by employees that are working at your public hospital districts and several public hospital districts are participants in the PEB. And the moat, well, all state agencies, actual state agencies are in the PEB, but then other independent governments, well, governments also have the choice to join PEB. There's a similar version with school districts called SEB. Um, that would have the same impact. You do not see this as much in other states. Um, and and I'm kind of glad you asked that because I actually just saw something literally a couple of days ago from another state where they made the comment that it was absorbed by the state. And so that was actually on my list of, I really literally just saw this like two or three days ago on a different state that said that they don't pass it down to the entities. So I'm kind of curious to check back in with the state auditor's office and see if we can change how they view this. But this came about three or four, probably five or six years ago now for the public hospital districts that have been in PEB for a while. Um, but there's like we work with five or six that are in the PEB and I think there's probably a dozen or so that are in PEB across the state. Um, and have this liability that's calculated each year. Then into the operating results, I think just kind of to hit the high points there. And you get the, you know, later I'll talk about. the, you know, later I'll talk about there's, there's no significant audit adjustments in in the financial statements. There was some true up for the cost report at the end of the year, just because it turned out to be a pretty positive receivable. But you've heard most of this through the year, but eight percent net patient service increased during the year. So good solid growth there. Salaries and wages were up ten percent. And then getting into this where you see the the other post-employment benefits, how it hit hit as an expense this year. Probably more in the three, four, five hundred thousand dollar range from year to year. It's very driven by some actual calculations and interest rates and the like. And so it will kind of go a little bit all over the place. But that's in there this year, and it is odd because it's non-cash. That's just.
Tom, absent that entry, when you're looking at operating income, would be a little over nine million, correct?
Yeah, that's a, yeah, that's good. It would be nine twenty-two would be the operating income. Your operating mark, your operating margin is four point four percent with the PEB in there. And it'd say that your goal is to be in the three to six percent range. So really solidly in there. If you take have out, it's seven point five percent operating margin. So very, very good. So I, I think, thanks, Julie, for saying that because it does help. It's a very, it's very good with the PEB in there, but it's even, you know, I mean, I don't know, very, very good without the PEB in there of operating.
Count on me to say that every single year, Tom.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, yeah. I, yeah, it's not my most fun thing to have to talk about the the PEB in these presentations and try to explain something that's such an odd accounting theory behind it. I can talk about the leases because that makes sense, but this one doesn't have as much logic to it. It has some logic, but not as much as it should. So bottom line there, very positive operating margin within without the PEB. And then into your non-operating results. A couple of things here point out investment losses, like all organizations that have investment portfolios, there were losses in twenty twenty-two. Most of your portfolio or all of your portfolio is debt securities, which will come back to their face value. It's a, it's kind of another unique accounting thing in that bonds and other debt securities are recorded at their fair value of what you would get if you sold them today. But if you hold them to maturity, they will go back to their original face value. So there will be gains one way or another in future years. And then a little bit for the bond issuance costs with the revenue bonds, it's recognized as an expense. And then the CARES Act Provider Relief Fund. The last year, you're going to have COVID money coming through in a positive way in the financial statements. Kind of the other thing that's interesting between a government, and this will impact you, it is impacting you a little bit in twenty twenty-two, but will impact you in twenty twenty-three is in the old days of a couple of years ago, interest, interest on construction during construction progress, projects like the revenue bonds would get capitalized as part of the project. It would go into the construction project, project, progress, and eventually be part of the capitalized cost. Now, as a government entity, it's going to go right to expense in the year that it's accrued. So you'll see that next year is not as much impact as the bonds were pretty close to the end of the year, but in next year it'll be in in the past, you would have, we would have seen that go into construction progress. So you'll see that next year in your quirky thing. And so you get to your, 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 your total margin is four point nine percent. And that includes the PEB. So it'd be a little higher if it took took the PEB back out of there. But the very solid operating margins and total margins in a very good spot to be. Because this is, you know, as you see what's happening in all hospitals, definitely not all hospitals are in this in this place. Lots are having struggles. Statement of cash flows gives us the the in the cash inflows and outflows for the year. Differences there like pretty fairly similar what we just talked about. And so I got that light coming into my office right now. I don't think you guys could probably even see me very well. The sun comes to it a weird way at this time of the day. I can't cover it up very well. And then going to the financials, further into the financial statements, pages seventeen through thirty-seven are the notes to the financial statements. Those that went up to serve three primary purposes, who you are as reporting entity. And then goes into the summary of significant accounting policies on how different balances and transactions are recognized and reported in the financial statements. The how, the how-to financial statements. So good reading on how the financial statements work. And then into additional details about significant account balances and transactions, things a reader of financial statements would want to know about the organization. And thinking that financial statements serve a purpose for management, definitely serve a purpose for you and your governing role. But they're ultimately designed for people and organizations outside of the outside of the organization that rely on them. Bondholders, creditors and the like, in case the public hospital district citizens. Then going on a couple accounting changes, and I heard this part earlier about the the Cerner, the Cerner Agreement. And a new accounting standard next year, the subscription-based information technology agreement is when you have a non-cancellable, multiple-year agreement for software as a service or subscription-based, it will be capitalized as a right to use asset with a corresponding liability, very similar to what's going on with the leases. And so you'll see that liability go on the books next year and a corresponding asset in minimal effect on actual expenses, because it all kind of flows to that part the same, but it does get the balance sheet grossed up. And then we've already talked about the PEB and the other post-inflated benefits. Ability. And then this included this just to help see the lease impact, and you know about the revenue bonds that you issued. But these new, the leases that were brought on to the balance sheet, the MRI equipment, big equipment, and then some multi smaller lease agreements kind of grouped here together. But the bigger numbers usually come from buildings that are leased and the different buildings that you have leased. At least in the Clayton Clinic Building from Public Hospital District Number Two is the largest one. And that's where we see most of the impact of the least newly standard is with real estate leases. The equipment leases while they do add to the balance sheet, they're generally not real significant to the overall picture. Then rev, uh, future maturities of debt and long leases over by year. Net patient service revenue by payer. This was taking useful note, and it does show where you who's paying for the different services of your patients in about forty, I mean, but thirty-nine percent is Medicare in twenty twenty-two, and about sixteen percent is Medicaid in twenty twenty-two. So a little over fifty, around fifty-five percent is those two government payers. And that's the core of the financial statements. Any questions at the moment? If none, then going on to pages thirty-nine and forty are that that the second is the second auditor's report. And it's in accordance with government auditing standards, and you do have this report every year because you are a public hospital district and as a requirement in the state of Washington. So according to government auditing standards, and the important takeaways are that there's no material weaknesses reported, no significant deficiencies reported. And, you know, Scott introduced the team and that we do report material weaknesses and significant deficiencies in audits. So it's not a given. This is a no, no finding. So that's, that's an important takeaway of the whole audit report.
The third. Tom, how often do you have findings when you do this for public, I mean, public hospital districts specifically? I'm just curious how many of these do and how often you find stuff.
I I'm going to go with, you know, what eighty percent of all statistics are made up here, but I'm going to make one up. I'm going to say it's like, it's, it's probably half, give or take a little bit from year to year, have a finding. I, it's I almost want to say it's more than half is what I feel like, but I don't have, I've never, I've not counted, so I don't really know, but I'd say half is a fair give or take.
No, that's really good. I was just curious sort of ballpark.
Not, not on Kelly's watch.
Not on Kelly's watch. No, no, no.
Thank you.
Which is good since Kelly is responsible for four different entities that we audit. So that's good for the accounting. And then the third auditor's report is on pages forty-one through forty-three. This one's specific to federal awards. It's required when you have more than seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars of federal awards. And because the CARES Act Provider Relief Funds Council's federal awards, you've had the single audit this year or uniform guidance this year and last year, unlikely you will need it in twenty twenty-three. But what I've been telling people more is that seven hundred and fifty thousand dollar threshold is hasn't been adjusted in quite a few years now. And it can kind of sneak up on organizations now. You get a few, couple thousand, couple hundred thousand here and a couple hundred thousand here. And all of a sudden, you're up to seven hundred and fifty thousand and it kicks in. So just that awareness. I don't think you're going to be there in twenty twenty-three, but it doesn't take as much as you would think of an organization, your side all of a sudden be there. And the next, oh, the important takeaway there, no findings on that. Don't want to forget the important part there is no findings related to the single audit as well, which is good. And then just for infant, why, why the single audit was necessary, the schedule of expenditures of federal awards. And you can see that the two biggest, the two are COVID nineteen related and won't repeat again. And without those, you're well under seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars federal awards. There's always a few ship grants and stuff that comes through the state, but not of large magnitude. What we see most of the single audits now are with, if you have HUD, HUD guaranteed or direct loans or USDA guaranteed or direct loans, kick in a lot of single audits for hospitals. And then that's the financial statements. And then moving into like the another letter that's issue report with the financial state or with the audit is the things you would want to know as the board from your auditors. And it's kind of a laundry list of mostly unrelated things is that there's the accounting policies and there was a new lease standard implemented this year. And like I said, there'll be another one implemented next year as well. There's estimates in financial statements with the most significant estimates being the allowance for doubtful accounts and contractual adjustments, Medicare settlements, and then now this year with the PEB liability because it's actually computed. No difficulties in performing the audit. I think the team was already thanked, but it is important to point out that not only is there no difficulties, but it goes very smoothly when we work with your team. So not all of it's go super smoothly. So we appreciate that. And I'm sure it works out nice for everyone. So thank you, everyone, for that. And then with no material audit adjustments, which is an important takeaway of an audit, if the audit is if auditors are coming in and detecting audit adjustments as part of the process, that means they weren't getting included in the reports you're getting through the year. You know, certainly there's some adjustments sometimes in the audit process at year end as a critical access hospital as you true up cost report settlements. But this, this bullet right here is a good reassurance that the financial statements you get on a regular basis are are accurate and useful. There is technically an uncorrected misstatement because the foundation is by government auditing standards, a component unit of the district, and it should be included in the reporting entity. But it's been deemed by by you to be not significant or material to the district as a whole, which is pretty common practice with foundations. We see foundations included in the reporting entity, and we see foundations excluded. So that that's just for sharing that information there. Then the rest, nothing too noteworthy there. And then as part of the audit process, something that was new last year, and we're trying to find better words and significant audit risk because that makes it sound alarming that you have specific unique, they already maybe unique, but they're not supposed to be alarming. Their kind of standard is that audits are risk-based in our approach. And all audits are going to have management override of controls because all the we have to have audit procedures detected to to look at that risk. And there's always going to be at least one related to revenue recognition and critical access hospitals. It's always going to be the patient's account receivable allowance and the Medicare settlements. And then the other two are because the PEB liability was new this year and the lease standard was new this year. So kind of the 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 theory here is that, you know, we're communicating this to you as the board. So you're aware of kind of how the audit, where we focus the audit on what the risks are in the financial statements. And it doesn't mean anything was done wrong because we didn't make any adjustments to it or do anything unique other than recognizing this. It, it, I think it's like, it's what could go, what, what could is the most, if something was to go wrong, where would, what are the most likely places it could go wrong? And then if it did go wrong, where it would make the most difference in the financial statements. And these are the areas where it would. So that's why our focus. And I think that is it. Does there's any questions or? And it did, we did present on Tuesday morning to the finance committee as well in public more detail.
Any questions for Tom?
So on Cerner being an asset, has it always been like that?
No, it will be new next year. It will in twenty twenty-three will go this year, the year we're in. I'm an auditor, so I'm always in the past. But in the current year that you're actually literally in, it will be recognized as an asset and a liability. And I think you're waiting until you get the new extended.
For longer depreciation.
Let me, let me correct that just a little bit. We, when we built, did the Cerner build and put that on books as an asset, we've been amortizing that. And with the new lease accounting standards, we're going to have a right of use asset liability for that. So there, I think.
To get a longer depreciation versus.
Yep. And so we, I think when, correct me if I'm wrong, I think what we actually put on the books back in two thousand eighteen was about seventeen million, or excuse me, seven million dollars.
And the implementation costs, this, this, what the significance of this new accounting standard, it's the monthly, the monthly payment you're making and committed to becomes an asset and a liability in addition to the implementation costs and the startup costs that you.
Why wouldn't electricity be an asset?
Electric, did I?
Electricity. I mean, it's a.
It's not a, it, it's not electricity.
What I mean, I'm just wondering like why other things similar that you don't really own, you're, you're purchasing a service. Why wouldn't that be an asset?
In this case, is because you, they're looking at it's a right to use asset. It's more to get the liability recognized. It's kind of the same with the lease obligations is that you have made a commitment that's non-cancellable. And so that obligation to get it on to your financial statements to show that obligation outside of the organization. And we work with both not-for-profit hospitals and government hospitals, and the two that the GASB is who sets your standards, it's FASB who sets it for the not-for-profit and for profit, very different. Even the leases are very different. The depreciation capitalization I was talking about earlier is very different. So there are you, not that there's a lot of not-for-profit hospitals in Washington of that are critical access hospital, but the accounting standards are different. So that is how government organizations are supposed to account for it. I think you would think it more from the liability part from the asset side is that is the key to understanding it. It's to get that obligation on the books.
All this so we can go like two thousand dollars a year and let me.
I didn't hear that very well, but yeah.
Other questions for Tom?
It's always interesting to have Tom's presentation.
Yeah. All right. Well, thank you very much for doing your due diligence on this. And thanks also to to our team here for facilitating. It sounds like it was a really smooth process. And yeah, this is always very instructive.
Yeah. Well, thank you for having us. And thanks for allowing me to move around on the agenda a little bit there, too. So thank you for that as well. See y'all later.
Thank you. Go ahead, Scott.
We would like to have the financial.
Oh, yeah.
And not that the board meeting isn't fascinating, but it's always okay to leave after your opponent report.
All right. So we have the financial statements here and the auditor's report.
Just one, one, Kelly, just one moment before she leaves. I just want to comment that this team has done an outstanding job, but we're also losing Kelly about thirty days. So we're so anyway, she, we just want to acknowledge what she has done for the accountant, the organization in this time that she's been with us. So.
Yeah, you were sort of an annual.
Thank you very much. We have a great team. And that is, you can see James' face now up on this screen.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks, Holly.
Okay, so we have the report here and we need to accept this. Okay. So, uh, we have the, uh, report here and we need to accept this. Are there any questions or, or comments before we move to a, a floor? All right. And it's the, it's just regular motion in both. Okay. A motion to, to accept this report.
We'll move to accept the DSA report just presented.
Motion from John, second from Erica. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right. Thank you. And I appreciate by the way, the, uh, communication with the board and invitations to the, uh, presentations. All right. Scott.
It's getting better than this.
I was gonna say, this is your moment.
Um, if you, if you return to page, you know, I think it is 78 is where our stats and what. Brines the revenue start with is, um. Where you'll see, uh, admissions and patient days are running below budget. That's a, a shift. A combination of things. We're below budget on deliveries, which are by definition inpatient care and patient admission and patient day. And then also, uh, Dr. Longos, uh, is very quick with his surgeries. And also, uh, patients, uh, tend to be observation patients as opposed to admitted as, as inpatients. And so that is reflected in the admissions and the patient days and also down on, um. Line 11, outpatient surgeries are below budget on inpatient surgeries, but we are exceeding budget on outpatient surgeries. So there's been a shift from, uh, inpatient to outpatient. And, uh, this will be reflected in the revenue that you'll see. And then on ER visits have been very, very. Yeah, it's been very busy. Um, other departments of the hospital have been, uh, busy also down on line 28. Clinics have been busy. They were, uh, just slightly below budget for the, but they're ahead of budget year to date. So, uh, uh. A, uh, interesting, uh, stat report. And if you go to line 81, you'll see that the revenue that we are. Reporting is reflected with the stats that you're seeing on the other page. Below budget on inpatient revenue, exceed budget on outpatient revenue. And then overall, we exceeded a budget for the month by one point, almost $6 million. Year to date, we're almost at $4.8 million over budget on revenues. That's causing, uh, us to be over budget in some of the expense categories also. Um, but, um. One of the expense categories that we're doing particularly well on for the month, last couple of months is temporary labor. That has really, has really bit us in the, at the last three months of last year and earlier this, this, uh, January of this year. Uh, so, uh, over budget year, excuse me, year to date, but, uh, we're trending down. And, uh, I mean, these folks are doing really good job of, uh, limiting that. Um, with the local providers that we have are recruiting to fill gaps. Our professional services are running over budget. Supply variant variances for the most part volume driven. So we're over budget on expenses by 985,000. Um, so we're able to post a positive operating, uh, income for the month of 302,000. Year to date, we're at 902. And then a positive net of 583,000 for the month and year to date, we're at, uh, over just over $2 million. So, uh. Good financial statement. So then if you move to the previous page on page 80, you'll see our, uh, days that counts perceivable. Like, uh, although they were up due to the over excess budget variance, but, uh. Uh, we had a, a, a solid cash month. Our days cash or air mix continues to be pretty good. So a pretty good financial statement for the month of April when we're, you know, today. New questions? Financial questions. And before we talk about capital, I have on pages 86 and 87. 89, uh, some analysis of, uh. The, uh. Impact of District Two, uh, purchasing the, uh, the clinic. For the, uh, the church building that we were initially thinking that we may have, uh, therapy services in there. Um, on page 87, the lease rate that we're paying, uh, for the Cleon Clinic. And what we would pose to pay for the, uh. At least the building for therapy services or other need, uh, you, other uses is about $21 square foot. So that's a market. Lease rate. And then, uh, the potential for additional revenue. And for physical therapy and clinic revenue, if we're able to add a provider, you know, create. And this was, there's been some changes since this was.
Yeah, this, um, so this is the, the update today. And we did sign the purchase and sale agreement. At 1.2 million dollars for the church for hospital. So they will end up owning that building. Um, to, if you are aware of this, 200,000 of that will come back as tenant improvements. Um, that we are very early in the process of looking at what it would cost to. Take 1600, I think it's 16, 1700 square feet on the first floor. And, um, remodel it for physical therapy. So we can move physical therapy out of the clinic and create more primary care space in the planet. 1700 square feet, their early number from the architect is 1.5 million dollars. So needless to say, we'll be going back to that number. So we are not asking for action from hospital district. This, this was the combined analysis. The obligation of the risk to hospital district one is we do want that 1700 square feet on the first floor. Um, for our operations, for training, for, we're not going to send 1.5 million dollars to do that. So the chairs that we're moving around up at Cleon may change. Um, we're also going to send Ron and Randy into the city in Cleon and ask them what the heck is going on there. There, it, it, this 1.5 million literally entertains, I think that we pave power street. And put lights and curves. I, I mean, it's a, if you're going to change the use of the building, you have to essentially do all that. So, um, we're not asking for 1.5 million dollars to do that. So. But be aware, hospital district two has acquired that book again. We expect to write that check in thirty days or so. It'll close on, uh, 2032. So more to come on how we can use that to expand primary care.
If it costs that much to improve it, I mean, what is this going to be a? Pick up? I mean, big speed bump?
I don't, I, you know, I really don't think so. Again, it's, it's too early to say it's going to cost a lot, but, um, purchasing that property is. If we sat and sort of after we got it with the shock of, to build a hospital for those square footage members. Um, it is, it absolutely the right thing for hospital district two to do, which is a previous decision. That decision's already been made. It's a matter of how can this hospital district use that space? And do, uh, we still don't see that building being there in seven years. So it's a short-term investment. We want to be very careful about. How much we sink into.
Okay.
Is that fair?
Absolutely. I have also, any other questions? I have, um, request for capital. This here, um, one is for a, um. That before you, um, has some Vitek bacteria. Incub, incubator and, uh, that incubates activities period to determine the strain and, uh. What type of, um, patients it are, it's sensitive to. So this is, uh, we're replacing, we have, we have one right now. It was purchased in 2013. It, um, is at end of life and this is, uh. By the perspective, I think this is critical piece of equipment.
Uh, John or Rob, do you have anything to say about this?
Yeah, we've discussed in the finance and, uh. In conclusion that this series is to be purchased and so we would triple board.
Okay. Uh, any questions before we move? All right. Do I motion to approve the first capital expenditure request of Vitek incubator? Second, second, Terry. All those in favor, please say aye.
Thank you very much. We have another, um, home health, um. Hospice, uh, EMR. And, um. This is, uh, the, it's a home care home base EMR. It is the actual cost. We looked at a couple of different systems and the actual cost of this system. For the initial capital outlay was 257,000, almost 258,000 dollars. The other unit is 168,000 dollars. However, the annual maintenance costs of the home care home base EMR. Is about $49,000 and the annual maintenance for the other $78,000. So over the five-year life of the asset, the home care home base EMR. Is $56,000 less and it is a, uh. It's much preferred by the staff who've looked at it. It's very, uh. Nurse provider friendly. And so this was the, the overwhelming choice of the home health hospice team. To buy the home care home base EMR. And just from a financial perspective, it makes sense to go with this over the. Alternative. And so that's the one that, uh, we would recommend.
Okay.
Rhonda went back and sweeps Sunday today and got the cost down about 20,000.
And this is not reflected in the.
What, how much are we approving?
I would say, I would approve the amount listed here. And this is the, the high end of what it would be.
They discounted $20,000 off the implementation and then, um, about 4,700 per year of the annual fee.
What's your magic?
I think my CEO is a puppy and we're like, that's, if you like this, we need to do this.
And to get sooner Turner or Oracle Health to interface, is that?
Yeah, that would be down the road, you know, and it's something we want to be sure of because they always say that they can interface. And when Dr. Fleming's was here and were a man, I did ask about that and they, they felt like it would interface with home care home base. But we haven't true, truly noted that all the way out yet. So Jeff is working, we're working with them to make sure that it will do community works. Our domain, that's different. And then of course, we would have to bring that back to capital to be approved. And, um, get on the Cerner project list because it is, there is a way out of the project. So it would be sometime in 2024, 2025 before we could do that.
Good for either project during the.
Yeah. Yeah, I remember you did the same kind of thing with the digital lembiography. Taking you the next time I buy a car. All right, uh, John, you.
So we, we're looking at a five-year lifespan currently, but the last one lasted a lot longer than 10 years. Can we. Just say this one will go longer than five years or?
High, I would say highly probable. How, although the limited factors is if Medicare changes the billing requirements and stuff like that. Then sometimes that shortens things up.
Well, and there might be upgrades.
Yeah.
In that term, yeah.
Yeah.
And then does the maintenance contract include upgrades in these five years? Or you're saying maybe some physical hardware thing that's upgrading or?
The upgrade would most likely not be included.
And this does also include the, the tablets and the, um, system that we're learning. Because we, we are needing new computers as well. So we bundled it all.
And you're, you're happy with this product?
Yes. The clinicians will be very happy with this product. It is one of the number one frustrations of. Unboarding new staff or staff working there is the amount of time they spend documenting. And so that takes them away from patient care. And, or they end up overtime, you know, needing to chart after they get off work technically, but they're still on the clock. Accruing overtime to document.
If we approve this tonight, approximately, when would they have these items in hand and use?
Um, it takes about four weeks to get the contract going and get on their timeline. And then for this product, they said it would be about a 15-week implementation. So we'll get on their calendar for it.
For what it's worth, the current interface of the system that we're using in home health and hospice. Looks like it was probably state of the art in Windows 3.
Hey, any, uh, any other questions or comments about this? All right. Do I have a motion to approve the home care home base?
Move to approve the family for home health and hospice.
Moved by John. Second by Erica? Or Bob? Okay, second by Bob. Uh, all those in favor approving this expenditure request, please say aye.
Put the squeeze on them.
All right. Thank you so much. That will be thrilled.
And I have one other just, uh, informational, uh, thing that I'd like to bring to your attention. This is, um. Um, this is, uh, you may have heard of this. When Medicare did take back, well, they announced that they were going to do a take back of all of the, uh. The bio fire COVID tests that we did, you know, so there was about 1,600 bio fire. Tests that we used, so it was in 2020, 21. And, um, and it was the only test that we had available that we could get test results back in an hour. And so, um, it was.
Or days even at the time.
Or the other, yeah, it was days that you had to send it out. And so this, uh. We learned about it last, uh, last year that they were thinking about this. And so we wrote, Dr. Martin and I wrote an appeal letter to, um. To Meridian, our fiscal intermediary. And, and told them, you know, this is just, this is the only test that we had available that we could use and get the appropriate test results back. And, uh, sent certified letter. And normally they were supposed to respond within 30 days of an appeal. Uh, I know they got the letter because I got the return receipt, but we had no response at all from, uh, the request. And then we, uh, representative Schreier was contacted. It was copied on the, the letter. And Dr. Martin spoke with her staff and, uh, they didn't make any headway. So now what is happening right now and it just, they, the take back is happening in real time right now. It started about a week and a half ago. And, um, and patients are getting, and it's automatic, you know, they're, it's automatic. And so patients are getting, Medicare takes their money back. It's leaving a balance owing the patient.
This is a patient who had, this is not random patients. It's, it's somebody who had this test and was a patient.
It is a Medicare patient that had the test.
Okay.
It's a Medicare patient that had the test and now they're getting balances owing about sometime, in some instances of $500. Balance owing. And so, uh, we have this, uh, this is a draft letter that we're going to. What we're going to do is we're not going to bill the patient. Some patients have paid, but they will be refunded. Uh, but it's generating a lot of concern and a lot of anxiety from about 1,600. Yes. And so we're, um, we will be sending out a letter to these patients. To tell them what has happened and that they won't be harmed by this, but, uh, we're being screwed. Screwed, pardon me, by Medicare.
Wow. All this COVID money that they.
Yeah.
They still have.
Right.
So this is not judged by, since in all hospitals or only public districts?
It's, um, anybody that was using the bio fire, 2010, 22 panel tips.
Well, and we don't know that all the FIs had, so the fiscal intermediary is regionalized. And I'm hearing that, uh, all the regions are reprocessing these either. This is not, not the, not ready.
Yeah. So anyway, uh, if, uh, uh, we got wind of it, a call came into Justin for Julie. And I took that and, uh, talked to the gentleman and figured out, I pulled up his account to see what the heck's going on. And it was an account that was zero balance, paid off two years ago. And he said, why are you billing me for $500? So anyway, we're making adjustments, but it's, it's crazy. Bunch of work, concern for patients of a bunch of work on our
Is this coming?
These will be sent out to individual patients. We're pulling mailing this.
To 1,600?
Yeah.
Why have they suddenly decided that they aren't going to, they're going to uncover this service?
No one knows. That basically is what we were asking when they appealed, what's driving that stuff?
They trade missiles to Ukraine.
What are we actually saying? We're committed to making sure our patients not face financial liability as a result. Are we committed? I mean, they, are we guaranteeing them they're not going to have to get out of pocket?
Correct, we will, we will adjust the account off, or if they have paid it, we will refund it.
To me, I just would like to say to have that said more clearly. I can imagine my mom reading this.
Sure.
What, what does this mean? You know, we, to me, I would just like to find a way to phrase it to say, you know, we're working on your behalf. But rest assured, you will not have to pay for this. It may take some time to get to adjust it, but we will take care of it. I just, if we're going to do it, let's make it quick.
Yeah, and I will say that since the, I'm checking with the staff that are getting the phone calls right now. They, it slowed down. So they, and they're telling the patients exactly what you want, what you said, that you, it's, you're not going to be
What's our worst-case scenario out of pocket?
60,000?
What was it on there?
Well
That's 1,300 patients, though, and this one says 1,600, so.
When, when the appeal letter was sent.
That's what the number was?
That's what the number was.
So it might be over 300,000 now then, or is the cost going down?
It has, the money is, the money is already gone. It was about $260,000. So that hit happen. It's just making life miserable for patients.
It's, so to be clear, what we get, we don't get, you know, a check in the mail. We get what's on RA or remittance advice. And, and Medicare sends us electronically, we get the funds, we get the remittance, remittance advice. And it says, here's all your payment for the work you did in March of 2023. And we did a million dollars worth of business for them in 2023. And the remittance advice is for 700,000. Oh, by the way, we took all this money back. They're not saying, give it, give it back to us. They're saying, we're withholding it from your current
So are there two parts of this, there's money we're paying as an institution? And then there's money individuals that are getting billed for, am I understanding this correctly?
This is the patient portion that we're
That we're addressing it. So we got, so which is the 300,000, the total, the patients? We'd be at risk to cover the patient share or is that our shares in institution?
Our shares in institution.
So what's the total potential?
It was, it was about $300,000 for us total. Let me, let me just do the math.
But then it's not, the math's not really adding up because then
Well, the The
We don't have to belabor it in this meeting, but
But how it was covered originally was going to depend on whether it was an ED visit or an inpatient or outser. And those are the patients we were doing these quick tests for. We needed to know when they were in the ED, if they were positive or not. If we needed to go back to nursing home or transfer, yeah, no, they had we, we needed to another COVID status. So those were the ones, if you'll recall, we were being really judicious. A, because we couldn't get a lot of supplies to do a lot of these testing. So we were managing and asking Dr. Martin to manage the use of this test pretty closely. But we had to have them for ED, which is going to be paid one way. We had to have, they had to have a procedure in the OR that's going to be paid another way. Inpatients, observation patients, it's all going to be split between us. And it's going to be allowable, it's going to be different, and it's going to be split between us and the patient.
When we initially provided this service, did the patient have a coinsurance for this?
The answer, the answer is no, because we were prohibited from billing COVID-related co-pays and coinsurance.
So it's not a reclaim of coinsurance and provider payment. It's, it's one, one amount for each patient, it sounds like, that they're reclaiming.
Yeah.
If you remember, there was a time when we were guaranteed that anything, that any testing that we did for COVID would be paid for. And this is the government saying, just kidding.
John, the total out of pocket for KVH, the takeback is about $390,000, I think.
Which would include the patient's share, we're reimbursing out their taking from KVH?
No, there was no patient share because it was COVID.
I thought you said they're now getting billed, though.
That, because it's
Medicare.
It generates automatically. And it was a, they adjudicated, they took their money back. They said, here's the total balance. They took a contractual adjustment and left the balance due to patients, so.
Yeah, so the total's 390. Medicare's saying, go collect 500 from the patient and reduce that 390. That's what we're
And, and we're saying, we're not going to do that regardless of how the ruling comes down. We're not going to do that. And we, since CNN did a, you know, we were the poster child, really, the thing. I would reach out to CNN and just say, by the way, a little follow-up story here.
That's a great idea.
They already have us in their books.
Yeah, that would be a good story to have CNN.
Yeah, we need to, if this is happening nationally, to me, it's
You've got our marketing first item.
Yeah, I just
Be careful what you ask.
And it's, you know, the fact that they're that's totally required to respond to an appeal and they blew it off and took the money back is pretty, pretty egregious.
Well, and I find it awful that if you go to their website today, it still says that they will pay for these tests.
I will just say that Scott worked on this all day long and, and Michelle Wirl worked on toning it down all day.
It's actually a good lead-in to this sort of national story. Want to see CFO get mad?
Yeah, thanks for sharing that with us and for the explanation.
Other than that, other than that good news.
I think it was almost worth 390,000 to hear you say. Okay, thank you very much, Scott. Okay, so we have some stuff coming up. We have this leadership summit, the AHA leadership summit in Seattle. Who's going? I'm going to So Erica, just if you can, try to make the decision by June 2nd, so we can get the early We have the retreat on June 3rd, everybody's planning for that. Who's going to the foundation? I think I'm going.
I'm going to the foundation that night.
Well, maybe, yeah. All right, so yeah. So anyway, yeah, so.
I think we have one 24-fores from KTH Leadership. You bought a table, John, that's, that's a lot of table.
I didn't actually.
I bought it, I bought a table.
You told me you bought it. Usually I feel that I couldn't
Me, important questions again, what is this dress code?
Well, yeah. I actually, I actually spoke with Laura today and she said it's kind of like Easter, spring brunch, wedding, spring, summer wedding.
You got a table as well?
Yes, I do. Good show and a wine salad we put together.
And I have one too.
All right, so that'll be good. We have the leadership conference, and Shwane, I assume that everybody's going to that? All right, so we're taking care of that. Anybody have anything to add to education? I mean, I don't know if this counts as education, but Bob and I did a give at the rehab. That was really informative. Marcus, Jeff.
Erica, I are going next week, so don't be all the secrets.
All right.
I stopped by and saw Mark and Marcus and the staff was absolutely thrilled to have you guys come. They just love that.
We appreciate it.
I do actually have something to add to the AHA stuff in the, in the Campbell's visit as well. There, there are 11 spots that I have currently booked right now. One of them is potentially freeing up. So Erica, if you do want to go, just let me know.
This is Seattle.
For Seattle, correct. And then they do have king or double queen room. So depending on how your party is going to arrive, you can let me know and I can change it. I have them all booked as king except for John, who's reached out with them on something different. So we can change that leading up to the actual conference as well. And then as far as Campbell's is concerned, we do have a dinner reservation Tuesday night, the 27th, for everybody who's going to be going at the Campbell's restaurant. So that's just plan on that, on that Tuesday night.
Is the reservation at Campbell's or?
It is, correct, yeah, at their restaurant.
All right. That was good. I always like to know when a meeting is late, Joe. I need, I need a month and a half. Do you have an agenda yet for the Hospital Association Leadership Summit?
For Seattle?
What happens on July 17?
Yeah, that agenda's out there. We have ordered to the HA agenda's been out there for a while. I went out and looked, the Shalane agenda has been flushed out now. So they do that.
So I could find it.
We'll, we'll get the HA agenda to you.
Okay, thank you so much.
You mentioned.
So you, all right, so Justin, you didn't, you have it all down, you're, you're all set for all that?
Yeah, yeah, and if anybody, again, if there's any other people on your guys' staff that you want to send to these, there's, there's still some time. Yeah, let me know, yeah.
All right. No old business, no new business, executive session, Julie, how long?
Uh, 20 minutes. 20 minutes and we will, and it's a three-week action, we will be asking for
Okay, I'm trying to decide because you always underestimate how like, how much we like to talk. Or maybe we're just All right, well, let's, let's try to 21:30. Let's take a break until 7:30 and then we'll, we'll reconvene at 7:30 and plan to go till 7:50, after which we'll plan to have action. Anything else for the good of the order before we break into executive session? Thank you all.
Thank you, Justin.
There is this last thing for Medic One to be signed by all for EMS Week. So please do that.